I'd like to invite you to stand with the meeting with an invocation and then the pledge to the flag, please. I'll lead us in prayer if you'll bow with me. Father, we thank you for your blessings for this day and this time. Thank you for the opportunities you've put before us and we ask that you direct us, help us to honor you in all things, in Christ's name. Amen. Let's join together in the pledge.
Our pledge is to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic of America, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. On behalf of the commission, let me tell you how much we appreciate your attendance here and your interest in the business of our county. And we have a fairly brief agenda, but there are some things that may take us a little longer, but not a lot of business items on the agenda. But first, we have the great pleasure of having some folks here that we want to make some awards and acknowledgements to. So I'll call on Commissioner Holmes to lead this part. We're flipping the agenda. We're going to lay the public comments section just for a minute for those of you if nobody opposes us, okay? Tony?
Let me ask Neeland and Andrew to get up and come up here with me.
Now, staying close to it, there's a camera video and so you be close to Tony and he'll show up.
I'm probably more excited about this and even more interested in you and our Andrew being my grandson and Neeland from Alabama, Alabama, and four others. So it makes me feel good to be able to do this. First proclamation is, and I don't think Coach Taylor's here, but the first one is a proclamation from the Covey County Commission to Anlou High School. And it reads, "Whereas Anlou High School football team experienced a successful two thousand eighteen season, advancing to the Alabama High School Athletic Association semifinals for preseason season, Andrew, as you're commended for an exciting, heartfelt, successful season, and you should rightly take pride in the accomplishments of the team and the record you earned, as well as life experience gained, participation with your teammates and coaches in this achievement. And whereas it gives tremendous amount of pleasure to express to all members of Anlou High School football team on behalf of Covey County Commission and all the citizens of Covey County, our sincere congratulations on achieving a new success and accomplishments and in doing so demonstrating for your peers and in all of us, your community, that great accomplishments can be realized with hard work, perseverance, and practice and commitment. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Covey County Commission is pleased publicly to commend Anlou High School football team for its fine efforts and present this proclamation as an expression of the admiration of this commission and all our citizens to the members of this team." That's adopted on this day, twenty-second day of January in two thousand nineteen. That's the first one. This is Andrew. Whereas Andrew Holmes, a student of Anlou High School, was recognized by the Alabama Sports Row Association in the class four A second team All-State two thousand eighteen. And whereas his efforts led him to be a part of this All-Star team, and whereas he is commended for an exciting, heartfelt and successful year, and you should rightly take pride in the accomplishments and the record you earned. And whereas it gives us tremendous amount of pleasure to express to Andrew on behalf of the Covey County Commission and all the citizens of Covey County, our sincere congratulations on achieving new success and accomplishments and appreciation for your demonstration, for your peers and for your community and accomplishments can be realized with hard work, perseverance, practice, and commitment. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Covey County Commission is pleased publicly to commend Andrew Holmes for his fine efforts and to present this proclamation as an expression of the admiration of this commission and all our citizens to Andrew adopting and approving twenty-second day of January two thousand nineteen." Whereas Neeland Stone, a student of Boilah High School, was recognized by the Alabama Sports Row Association in class one A Honorable Mention All-State two thousand eighteen. And whereas his efforts led him to be a part of this All-State team, and whereas he is commended for an exciting, heartfelt and successful year, and you should rightly take pride in the accomplishments and the record you earned. And whereas it gives us tremendous amount of pleasure to express to Neeland on behalf of the Covey County Commission and all the citizens of Covey County, our sincere congratulations on achieving new success and accomplishments. Our appreciation for your demonstration for your peers and for all of us, the community, that the great accomplishments can be realized with hard work, perseverance, and practice and commitment. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Covey County Commission is pleased to publicly commend Neeland Stone for his fine efforts and to present this proclamation as an expression of the admiration of this commission and all our citizens to Neeland Stone.
Andrew or Neeland, y'all, one of my comments, you're welcome to.
That twenty, fifteen or twenty-minute limit.
We would love to, we'd love to get a picture with you guys while you're up here if you don't mind. We do commend you guys for, for your efforts and for your successes this year. You certainly are representing your schools well and our whole county and we thank you for that. So if no one opposes, we're going to take a five-minute recess this early in the thing so we can get photos. And I know there are others that will want to commend you as well and congratulate you, so.
You know they want to get back to the.
We'll recess for five minutes and they can stay for the rest of the meeting if you want. Thirty more seconds on recess, I guess. Okay, maybe a minute. They chose not to stay for the meeting. I cannot believe it. Can y'all? Back to school. That's a pretty bad meeting when they want to get to school.
Jackson's open up, man.
All right, we'll call the meeting back to order. Thank you for working with us, old man. I'm certainly proud of those young men and wish them the very best in the coming years. Next item on our agenda is public comments from citizens and we have Ms. Donna Hendricks scheduled to make some comments and present some things to us as a group. So Ms. Donna, we welcome you and we'll ask you to come to the podium. And I know you had somewhat prepared to do this at an earlier meeting and we're, we'll welcome you now. And I'm sorry if my schedule conflicted and caused you to delay, but I'm glad to hear, hear your thoughts.
That's all right, no problem. All right, first off, I'd like to thank y'all for giving me the opportunity to speak. So now I want to discuss money and roads. All right, in two thousand eighteen, we started with a budget of seventeen point eight million. How much did we start with in two thousand nineteen? All right, we'll move on.
Yeah, let me, let me mention to you on, on things like that, I mean, I'm not prepared. I don't think either commissioners or others are off the top of our heads. So the questions that you raise, we can get you an answer later. It's going to be hard for us to address things on a, on the fly. But if we can, we will.
All right, well, the one thing I'd like to address is some of the expenditures that y'all had last year. I really don't see that they were all needed, but that's my opinion. So y'all can tell me. In January, you approved travel requests for commissioners and other staff to go to the National Association of Counties Conference. In March, you approved allocating nine thousand dollars from the contingency fund to replace carpet in the administration building. In July, you approved another travel to the White House Conference. In December, you approved for an app to be installed, which cost eight thousand four hundred dollars, which included a one-time fee for software, meetings, and trainings, and then it would be a thousand dollars a month for one year. That way you could text, visit the website, send messages, okay? Then in December, you also purchased five acres of land for sixty thousand for a future economic development project. And it was stated, hopefully within ten days, an announcement would be made when the partners were ready to tell us what would be built out there. Ten days have come and gone. We still have not heard anything. The public hasn't. Okay, it was paid to the Columbia Regional Hospital Foundation. That's what it said?
Yes, ma'am, that was, that was a misprint. That's not where the land was purchased from, but we'll address that.
Okay, so I was curious as to what type of foundation that was.
It's, it's, that was a misprint. That was not where the land was purchased from, but we'll, we'll just go down and list and order.
That's fine. Okay, now to the roads and the bridges, okay? Mr. White, you stated this in September of two thousand seventeen, that the county was operating with the same sum of money for the roads and bridges it had in nineteen ninety-five. Now I live on a dirt road. In my opinion, the dirt road that I live on was in way much better shape then compared to now. So has our budget not gained any money in upcoming fourteen years, this September from ninety-five until now? Because to me, the roads were in way better shape.
Why don't we, if you don't mind, we'll stop there. Because that, that's something that we can't address. It's not specific, but it's certainly general. I think all of us have an opinion on that and we'd like to address that. You're correct. That, that was a statement I made and I stand by that. The funding, what we call the gas tax monies, the funding that operates our road and bridge departments, what we refer to as the engineer's office, those, those revenues to the county have not increased in over twenty years, about twenty-eight years, and I guess it is. The reason for that is because there, it's, those funds come from gas taxes. Gas taxes, federal and state, are so much per gallon and the consumption, I'm assuming the consumption of gas or diesel hasn't increased during those years. Now, I would think it had because you look on the road and there are more vehicles traveling, but they tend to be a lot more efficient. And so the actual number of gallons sold evidently has not increased. What we get at the county level has not increased. I doubt that there's been a five percent, if that much, I doubt it's that much, five percent change in revenue in that twenty-eight-year period. So yes, the services that you saw, the shape of the roads that you saw twenty-five years ago were better than now. Because during that time, our cost of asphalt to resurface and maintain paved roads or, or to pave new paved roads, the cost of our labor has gone up because we continue to give cost of living raises and so forth. Cost of our fuel is probably double or triple since that time. So we have less money. At the end of that process, we have less money to do our work with. We've had to cut staff. We don't have nearly as much asphalt bought in a year as we did then because our dollars don't go as far. We're paying double and triple and maybe even quadruple the cost of asphalt. So yeah, you don't see as good a service now as you did then. But I don't think it's a lot less because we constantly are doing things to improve our efficiencies and our operations. We have been able to maintain good equipment compared to what you saw twenty-five years ago, I'll say thirty years ago. Our equipment's a lot better, so we're able to do significantly better per, per hour of operation than they did then because there was a lot higher maintenance costs and stuff. But so we've done a lot of things to manage our money and stretch it a lot farther. Thankfully, we have the positive impact of FEMA money over the last twenty years that has, has added to the gas tax money and allowed us to operate at a pretty good level. But that, that statement is absolutely true.
Because I was going to say, if I had pictures from back then compared to now, even though the equipment may be better now than it was then, there was more work done on the roads back then than there is now.
And that's because the money was a lot greater.
Well, could the money, could the money have been misused?
I'm telling you, the revenue's not there. We didn't have it to misuse. The revenue twenty-five years ago is relatively speaking the same it is today. So it's not a, there may be, we certainly could debate how we chose to use dollars, but as a general statement, it was used, if it comes in for gas, if it's gas tax revenue coming in for roads and bridges, it is used on roads and bridges, period. We can't, we can't reallocate.
I was going to say, Ms. Donna, also, you know, back, and I can't speak twenty-five years, well, thirty, twenty-five, thirty years, but almost twenty years ago, we used to have eight more graders. We've actually deleted one of those, we've taken one of those out of service side of our fleet just because of the money cost situation. So we have seven graders doing what work eight used to do. We used to have a lot of projects.
We, we actually had nine in the day because we had three in one district, two in the other three districts.
But that's, that's part, that's, that's part of the, the current. It takes longer to get around.
To address the, the decreases in funding.
Because each grader now has got about ninety-four miles. They typically blade. It's each, you got basically two in y'all's area. You got one, John Harper does one area and Tracy Nicholas does the other four. But we're doing things. We're trying to do things more efficient. We just got through with a herbicide spraying that we have not done in the past on our dirt roads. We just got through doing this. Matter of fact, there's about a two-week window in October and we had to basically get a contractor to come in and help us because we got a lot of roads. And he helped us do a lot of spraying. So then you're going to start to see a better, come springtime, you're not going to see the green up along the dirt roads like you've seen in the past. And we're working toward that way. I've got in Kyle's district.
Is that more cost-effective?
Yes.
Okay, that's, then that's the reason, trying to stretch the dollars.
But you'll start seeing more improvement. We've done a lot of work recently. If you, I know it's just probably not right there in y'all's area, but we've done a lot of work in District Four, Arnold Road, the Lindsay Loop area, Jake Sellers Road, somebody's road with a lot of FEMA money. So I did some totals. I know y'all's district got about a million and a half dollars FEMA money for, for the roads in District Four area out of the five point four million. And we just applied for a, a state grant. It's a high-risk rural roads grant in which I can't technically say we've got it yet. We've been told we were going to get it. But County Road twenty-one, it was another spot that we had, but about thirty-one percent of those funds are going to District Four as well. So it's a, as far as the counties whole, I'd say we're evenly on, on most of our, because the one point five means about twenty-eight percent of the FEMA monies are going toward District Four. So just slightly above average.
Depends on the, and that's not something we're driving. It depends on the event itself, so.
And, and on that hazardous, he, Lynn had to work with the state. It wasn't just something he, he put out. He had to show why that road was hazardous with rec reports and he had to show the different reasons. He didn't just pick out a road and say, hey, this is it. He had to back that up with different data to show why that road deserved that.
But the, the currents, but the, but the grading, I'm just going to get to the grading part. You had eight or nine graders. Now you have just seven. So that, that is a big difference, big difference.
You actually had nine plus the county way. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, you also stated in January of two thousand eighteen that several bridges would be replaced and you'd implement a more aggressive ride-of-way program that you believe would enhance public safety. Okay, we were told we have a hundred and fifty-nine bridges in Covington County. How many were replaced or repaided?
We got two hundred eighty-four bridges in the county. That's on inventory.
How many were, any were then too, because it was stated in January of last year that you would replace some bridges. And really, you may not have replaced them as much money as it cost, but could you do a major overhaul on them? And if you did, how many was it?
We have, on the books right now, we're looking at the Point A Road Bridge. That's a fifteen-ton bridge there by the sod farm, close to the Ganian. They're close to Bush Isle Road. That's one we've, we've got upcoming. We have. Scheduled, that's scheduled, that we've already had resolutions passed here to, to, to do. We have six flat bridges that we applied for federal funding. That's, that was above and beyond our normal funds, which we, we reached out and levels of secure funds for six bridges in the national forest that we're doing. One we're letting contract very soon.
Out of those six?
Out of the six. We are in the process. We just, the Mitchell Bridge, that was a FEMA bridge in two thousand fifteen. We just got funding secured for that and we're starting to build that bridge. We're, matter of fact, fixing to prove some, some items today that allows me to start on that bridge. We've already got the land cleared. Everything's already set. They're erecting the crane this morning, matter of fact, on that bridge. There's been several bridges. We had a cotton truck break in a, a three-ton bridge on us. We just got the repair in it in District Four area on Joe Road.
What about the one at Wiggins Crossroads?
And we just got through building a bridge at Wiggins Crossroads about three months ago. We still, I guess, we got to stripe it to open the road back up. But that's what's holding us up on that. But we're working, and as far as the rideaway stuff that you're talking about, we've, we have a, and you can check and see, you can go by Rosson Ridge Road, and just right up in these areas that I'm talking about. Rosson Ridge Road, Over Yonder Road is where our machine's been working. Now, we're, we pulled it off that area right now to work on a resurfacing job that we're fixing to do. I'm trying to get all the rideaway cleaned up, pipes extended, ditches graded, everything. So when they resurface road, we got a basic, a brand-new road. Everything's like it needs to be. We've done Arnold Road, like I said, Lindsay Loop area, if you've been up in those areas, we totally reclaimed the rideaway in those areas. We built the road, ditches, Jake Sellers Road, some of those roads in that area. I'm trying to think of the road that's, that's parallel to that one there in Red Level. But we're working toward that. Now, I have our, we have a wheeled excavator. That's what I'm talking about. We're just doing most of this clearing. It's, it's going to be camped out between Plyo Mill Road, eighty-four, and Brooklyn Road. We're going to get every road in that area cleaned up all the rideaway. There's a lot of high-density areas in that area. We're getting those roads opened up and that's where that machine will be until they get, get through with that.
Lynn, that machine's been operational for how many months now?
Since January. We've cleaned about, we've, we've done about sixty miles of rideaway to date with that machine.
We're so far behind on the rideaway clearance that hadn't been done in the past that it's going to take us estimated three years.
We've done sixty, we've done sixty miles in the last year. So I mean, you're looking at ten years just on our dirt roads. That's not counting our paved roads.
Okay, but back then, there was no bushes overhanging into the roads. They were all kept cut back. How could they be kept cut back then and not now? What went wrong?
The money was a lot, went a lot farther. We had larger crews. Each district had seven, tended to have seven members of their crew. That's twenty-eight people. And I don't know how many you have working on dirt roads only right now, but it's a lot less than twenty-eight. We've just had to reduce staff because the funding has not increased with the cost.
Okay, so if this goes to legislature again and it's proved this funding that y'all are wanting for the roads and bridges, will we see a drastic increase in all of this cleanup or how many years?
Well, the cleanup, you'll, you'll see it now. We're working on cleanup now. I mean, like I say, you, you can't tell the, what we've done, but the, the spraying that was, that was done.
But if you get the money from the legislature that you're wanting?
It depends on how they tie this, what kind of strings are attached to that. Most, there's very likely that they're going to say that that money's going to be for new, new paving, asphalt, new or replacement bridges. And those are slow projects, especially bridge replacement. I mean, he mentioned the ones that he's working on. They've been on, on the books and in the process for twenty-four months. But you'll, if they tie it to that, then no, we're not going to see it on spraying or additional labor. It depends on how much flexibility they give us in spending that money. But it's, it comes with a stipulation as to where and how it can be spent and we'll spend it within those guidelines. Hopefully we'll see improvements. Overall, we will. And I would suggest to you that if you, if you look at the grades on our roads in the last six or seven years, that they have been significantly improved.
That matters state, not matter.
And they, they stopped, they stopped doing that, but when we were keeping.
Up until about eighteen months ago they did. And they were improved year to year to year. And that's somebody that rides all fourteen hundred miles of road or whatever, thirteen hundred fifty miles of road and assesses. So considering limited and shrinking funding, these guys have done an excellent job of getting the work done, I think.
And remember, Ms. Donna, that we've got the third most dirt roads in the whole state of Alabama, too.
Oh, I, I know there's a lot of them here, but I just, it's puzzling to me. And I know y'all said the money was better back then compared to now, but it seemed like the roads were in way better shape. Even as a little kid, growing up, they were better than we have now.
We have so much more traffic now. We have, you know, I can recall years ago that, you know, had traffic on twenty-nine from Heath, you could come down, lose and meet two cars. Now you can't even pull off a trans, go road without having to wait. I mean, we have so many more, people are so much more mobile now and they wearing the roads out. A good example of, I'll give you a Shreve Road that we had to resurface because just the relocation of Walmart changed the, the route that people travel to get to where the Walmart is now and then increased the traffic on that road and actually wore the road out sooner than it was anticipated. And so that was one of the things that, that I remember happened in my district that I was wearing.
Okay, will you answer my question I was going to ask about how many road graders we had?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, are they allowed to only operate for so many hours a day?
No, that's, that's, that's a false statement. That is false.
So they can operate from, say, seven to four o'clock?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, they can go straight. All right, well, that was one thing I was curious about there. Does the county still dig any ditches, bush hog any of the rideaways? Now, I'm not talking on paved roads. I'm talking dark roads.
And that's what we're working on. The ditch pulling, it's a, that's a double-edged sword. Ditches do need to be pulled, yes. We're starting to get back to pulling some of those. But when you put this, this FEMA rock, the rock we've been putting on the road, if you take that mud that's in the ditches and put it on top of the road, you're talking about a total mess. We're trying to come up with a better solution as far as actually getting and disposing of that material in the, in the ditch. But we are working on that. That is something we are working on.
Are professional decision that Lynn, with his professional judgment, makes in conjunction with the commissioners and so.
And one of the major problems with that right now and has been for the last three or four months is those ditches are so wet. And you just, there's nothing in there but mud and debris and you can't, you know, you can't put it on the road, really.
No, you can't, you can't grade a road that's wet.
And we fought that and, and other counties around us, we fought that just this past weekend.
But because they have not been dug a little along as years went by? But could they have not been dug a little along as years went by, where they were not in such bad shape as they are now? Is, I'm trying to get across what went wrong, not just all money, what went wrong along the way?
Well, it's just putting this, this cap, this material on the road, it's just, you know, you put that on material on, on the road, it just makes a, a mess when you pull it back into the, to the, to the road. Uh, but we are working, I, like I said, this wheeled excavator, we also got a dishing bucket with that, and we actually gonna be digging these ditches out. But on some of the roads I was talking about, like, uh, all around Lins Loop, we've gone back and hole the ditches, the right-of-way, everything's been done on those roads, Jake Sellers Road, some of these roads I've been talking about, uh, Aron Road, some of those roads have already been totally redone, and you can check those out in those areas.
Okay, do y'all have a machine that cuts the bushes?
Yes, ma'am, that's the one I was talking about, that's that wheeled excavator that we have, like I said, if you go to Over Yonder Road and look, or either, uh, Rosen Ridge right now, um, that's what we've been working on.
Okay, when do you think it would be coming our way?
Well, like I said, I wanna get those, the, the, the roads round, like I said, between Brooklyn, eighty-four.
We can't, we're not gonna, we can't commit on that because he's taking it on as needed on a pri- priority basis, and, and, I mean, we, we don't know where you compare.
And you only have one of those machines.
Yes, but now we've, we have purchased, we have purchased, I'm waiting on one for delivery this week, we are purchasing, uh, we have purchased a new side-mounted machine that'll make it quicker for some of the smaller stuff, the machine that I'm talking about cuts, you know, yeah, she cuts trees and, and big limbs, it'll reach about twenty-five feet up in the air, um, but now this machine's smaller, but, um, and I wanna pre-cut ahead of the, the big machine, that way he's not wasting time cutting small stuff, and that small machine can get, get the smallest stuff, so our production should be picking up as far as that, like I said, we got sixty miles this past year, and I hope we, with, with this addition, this new machine, it should help us, um, with our, our, our speed.
Move a little quicker, Mr. Hendricks, yeah, I'm coming.
What Ms. Hendricks was trying to say, on our dirt road, y'all had them come out and cut the side of the road on the outside of the curve, or on the inside of the curve, whereas all the overgrowth that blocks your vision. They worked on it for a whole day, and they never came back and did the inside of the curve.
Well, we can, we can certainly look at that and address it, and.
Well, she has pictures of it.
Well, I believe, I believe it without a picture, but, yeah.
Well, it's not as bad right now because a lot of the leaves have fell off, and the overgrowth, but those limbs and stuff are still there.
Okay.
Yeah, go ahead.
But I was told by the operators there that they were pulled and sent somewhere else. It was like they work here a while, then they move us here, and we work a while, and we go somewhere else and work a while. Why not put them in one area, let them finish the job, not necessarily just my road, anybody's road?
Yes.
Finish that job, and then move on.
That's a, that's a good idea, and certainly something that we, uh, work on every day, but because of limited resources, we occasionally have to pull them to a higher priority. I don't know about your situation, but that often is the case, but that's a fair, uh, a, a reasonable thought that we could get a job done when we're there, that's what we'd like to do.
Okay, um, well, now I know that we're on the unit system now, okay, that was implemented ten years ago this year, to me, that was a huge era that y'all made. The engineer, Mr. Ross, he can't run this county by himself, there's no one way, one human can do that. He needs the four commissioners working with him, which means, do y'all get out and ride the roads?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so you ride each dirt road, and you make a list as what needs to be done on this dirt road, and you turn it into him, and then let him go from there, which ones are the most needed, do y'all do that?
We do. We do, to a certain extent, I don't ride every dirt road, you know, some don't need it, but if we have a call, or if I have a call by you or somebody that was in my district, or, or even sometimes I get calls to other commissioners' districts, just cause they know me, and know how to contact me, and we just pass that information on, also, the, the employees, our workers out on these roads, they see them, you know, and they report it, and that's one of the things that you referred to in this app, that it, uh, we implemented this program, if you see a problem on the road, you can, uh, text that straight to the commission, I mean, to the engineer's office and have that resolved. You know what I'm saying, it, it, that sets in priority to, to the workload and the area we work in. Uh, and something else you addressed, and I'll mention on that, is that in the district system years ago, if, um, I may not send my equipment to Kyle's district, but now with the unit system, we may send four graders in one district for a week or however long, if we don't have some, you know, issues in other than we can use the other three or four graders in the other part of county, but they, they do that, it's just hard to do it as much as we have to do in, in the time, days that we have to work, we must a lot of work days, a lot of work days.
Now, you asked, on, on defense or something, you asked us, do we ride the roads? Yeah, we, we do, at times we're going in different places, me and Lynn daily talking. But you can ask Ms. Karen right here, we're not turning in that, very seldom we ever turn in any mileage. Our mileage has went up, we're trying to cut every corner we can ourselves. We're not out here just taking money and just getting what we can out of the county, we trying to put something back that would help in some ways, other, other ways. So you can ask any of these commissioners here, any of us, we're not taking the raises that we voted in. We're not doing, we're not up here just taking money and doing things and not doing nothing, we are. We trying to do the best we can for the county, and what would help with the county, little bit implements at the time has turned into some money back to the county, back to our money, our general fund, so we're trying our best to do things in a way that will reflect back, you know, to the county.
Well, just as long as you are out riding the roads, that you were elected for your district by the individuals to get out, oversee them, and make sure that they are kept up as best they can be, is all that we're asking as citizens.
Yes, ma'am. And Ms. Donovan, in, in defense for your commissioners, they all send me work, and I try to get what they can in a timely manner, I think everyone will tell you that I tried to do what they ask in a timely manner. Sometimes it can't happen just cause logistics-wise, but most time I try to get, if they got an issue, I try to jump on it pretty quick, so they, these, these guys are working for you. Um, so, uh, but they, they are out there doing their job, I, I do talk to them daily with, with, with issues, so.
Alright, like I said, I'm just asking questions, you answer me the best that you can. Okay, um, I saw y'all had a town meeting in July in Florilla, in Mr. Tompkins' district. Can we not have more of those meetings in other districts where we could come and voice our opinions?
Yes, ma'am, I just talked with Commissioner Holmes about that at the last meeting that we were talking about getting back on board and, and implementing those and trying to set up a schedule ahead of time, uh, to do that, we've talked about that two weeks ago. Uh, hadn't done anything, I'm not making excuses, but we hadn't done anything on it, but we have talked and tried to see where we wanted to go next and, and what facility we would use, uh, probably red leveled the the town hall meeting place y'all have there, probably be adequate for what we had, I think Florilla.
There would be at night.
Yeah, and when, yeah, when people can come, but, right, I don't have.
I think that was a good idea.
Yes, ma'am.
To have a town meeting, and I would like to see more.
I was very, I was very disappointed in the attendance that showed up, uh, you know, I the way we get the concerns from you, uh, I can get out and ride these roads till I'm blue in the face. Uh, and I, let me go back to a little something Kenny said a while ago, uh, the average in my district was about eleven hundred dollars a mi- mileage that was charged to this, to District three. I hadn't charged eleven hundred dollars total since I have been commissioner here. Uh, and I don't think anybody up here on this thing had. Uh, but we do ride the roads, I do, I receive calls, my wife said, like you can tell you, I get three or four a week, every week, and we try immediately to do something about it. Uh, Lynn is probably, as many people that I have worked with in my life, he's probably one of the easiest I've ever worked with, if I have a problem, within hours normally, it's taken care of. I sympathize with you so bad, I've lived on a dirt road most of my life, short time, I lived on a paved road, but it was a very short time. I'm gonna disagree with you a little bit in the condition of the road, I remember pulling myself out of a ditch, pulling everybody out of the ditch back in the eighties, early eighties, middle eighties. Uh, it hadn't been anybody in ditch on my road that I can remember in twenty years. That's, that part of it has gotten better, the overgrown on the side of the roads, I'm in total agreement with you about, there, that, that kinda thing has happened.
It's a statewide issue too, Ms. Donovan, I mean, they're, they're, they're working, I think now, somebody told me they're working on thirty-one there in Butler County right now, doing a total, on, on, on a state highway, they're doing that now on the state highway.
Well, after y'all cut it, can you go back and spray it then, or that will kill it, so you can keep it back, and keep it back, okay?
Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am. Keep it, keep it back, yes, ma'am, absolutely, absolutely.
But I, and, and, and I, and I do sympathize with you, because like I said, I've lived on a dirt road all my life, I, I know, I know what it is, I know what it's to live on. I worry more honestly right now about the paved roads that I'm seeing in our county that are deteriorating, that are going back to, and we, we talk to some commissioners in other counties, that they're actually having to go in and plow up paved roads because we don't have the dollars and cents to keep that road up now, and they're having to go back and turn them back into dirt road, I certainly don't want to see that happen in Covington County. That's one of the reasons I think you see each one of us trying as best we can to watch how these dollars are spent. And we, and, and, look, there's some places that we've cut back, I know there's some places that we've cut back on, we've cut back some in my district, but we hadn't had to plow up a paved road yet, and for that, I'm proud of that.
Alright, well, I guess I'm pretty much to the end of mine, um, except for the one thing, you know, we'll keep bringing it up is about the Lloyd Mill Bridge area, have y'all found anything out?
Yes, ma'am, I've been in contact with the new landowner, claim, ownership just took place first of the year, and I've been in contact, the new, the new contact person that, with, with the new company for the last two weeks. And I've sent them maps and everything that we're, we're negotiating right-of-way, um, right now, so.
Do you have any ideas, someone you think that will?
No, ma'am, it's just, I'm, I'm waiting to see where, it's, it's gonna be a, an appraisal done, I'm, there's gonna be an appraisal done on the, on the property. Uh, we're dealing with a large land company like this, it's just go, it's gonna take a little bit of time to, to do this, especially with a new, new owner, um, just now getting it, so, uh, um, but I haven't been in contact with, with the new, new people, we are corresponding and, and hoping it, but just keep, I, I, I'll be glad to give an update at every meeting.
And we were in touch with the previous landowners as well, I mean, we didn't wait until now, and we just got caught in this transition.
Right.
Kinda delayed it, so. Let me, let me ask you, Greg, if you will, because it was said about the ten days, and I know you can't turn away from that, but as much as we can view them on what the deal is, can you do that? Wait, still waiting for the, uh, the folks to, to schedule their people to, to attend an announcement on economic development project that we purchased the land for, uh, I, I exchanged emails last week with them, and I'm just waiting any day for, for them to say it. It might take two or three weeks. Let, let me assure you this, it is here, it is coming, it will be here.
Utility improvement's sorta been done, we did, and utility improvements last week, some power, uh, lines and cable lines have been raised and everything, this, I mean, it's gonna happen.
We could, and we could, honestly, we could make the announcement now, but as a courtesy, we would like for those that are doing it to, to participate in that, and so strictly as a courtesy to them, that's.
And it involves the state, and the state is sending some emails as to when they might schedule that toward the end of the month, I believe it's, they had about four dates in there, is that correct?
We're, we're still waiting for them to respond back.
Waiting to respond on what dates will be available, but I can tell you something about that, uh, the Columbia General Foundation owns property on this side of our office, and the property we bought was not related to any of that purchase. That was just a misprint by the media, who, I don't know how that got out there, it's just something happened, but I'd like to address one of the things you talked about, uh, I'm very reluctant to go to what I call a convention or a meeting or something, because if, I don't feel like it's a benefit to the county, I don't wanna go. Uh, that being said, we did go to Washington DC, and I did go, huh, and I waited till the last minute to sign that. And, uh, we were invited along with the delegation from Louisiana to go in, in, to the White House and, uh, I understand a little bit more about how things get done or don't get done than I did by going. Also, we were able to, Mr. Adams and I were able to make contact with, uh, Mr. Shelby's office, which he is head of the appropriations committee now, and we talked to them about some possible funding for Covington County, and were able to make a connection with one of his staff that just happened to be from Enterprise. So those little things help, you know, to establish some kind of rapport with those people so that they do know the needs, and, and this young lady just happened to realize some of the needs that we have in our county, and willing to help us work toward that. Now, has anything happened with it? No, but it's, it's just a slow process because we're just the one little grain of sand in a big bucket. Uh, and I think, uh, uh, Greg went and you met with, uh,
Robie's office.
Ms. Robie's office about some stuff, so I feel like that was a trip worthwhile. Uh, and another one that, uh, relates to the herbicide spraying is, uh, Ron and I were at the, uh, Orange Beach and happened to have one of the vendors down there that does custom spraying, and have I guess chemist and all that know what type herbicide to spray on, what type plan or whatever to help retard the growth or kill it or whatever, and selective process, and sometimes you're using the wrong stuff, and I think that really helped, uh, and I think you'll see a difference. So I, I feel like that was worthwhile.
Well, like I said, I've got some pictures that see if y'all would care to look at them, they're in black and white, but it just shows the growth, the overhang on the roads, and if you meet somebody on a sharp curve, you're gonna meet head on before you know it, on down at the overgrowth, and you can't see it.
That's there, there at y'all's house, Ms. Donovan, okay, I'll get, I'll get.
Cause that ha- that has happened, not just us, but we have met, cause every once in a while, an eighteen-wheeler comes through there, cause it's a cut-through road, and we met, some individuals met right there head on, and that could have been a huge accident. That's why I'm asking, could the right-of-way not be cut, then sprayed and kept up like it was twenty years ago?
Yes, ma'am, well, I can, I can go back and get that spot, it's gonna be raining tomorrow, but pretty bad what I understand, so Thursday's gonna be a wash as far as any dirt work and all that, so we can do our, we try to do our right-of-way stuff on those wet days, so I can try to maybe do something for y'all there.
Okay, alright, well, I said, I appreciate that.
Thank you, thank you. Alright, Donna, thank you, appreciate you, rescheduling, coming back to, to meet with us.
Yes, ma'am.
And I hope we can get everything taken care of.
Yes, ma'am.
I'll go, we're working that way. The only, uh, scheduled comments from citizens, we, we appreciate others of you being here, uh, out of an interest for, uh, the, probably the same issues that she raised, and, uh, know that the bridge certainly is an ongoing concern, and we're, we're, we are working feels awfully slow to me, but we're working every day towards, uh, moving forward there. Uh, next on the agenda is public comment from, uh, other elected officials, uh, we have Sheriff Terman with us today, welcome. Sheriff, glad to have you with us, uh, we're gonna limit you to thirty minutes, and then we'll put you on the end of the agenda, and you carry on.
Thank y'all for having me tonight, uh, last week I started my new job as the sheriff of Covington County, um, it's been a challenge. We have a lot of work to do, but, uh, we are on schedule to have everything tightened up within the first ninety days. Uh, we have, uh, we have a lot of, uh, activities going on right now with inventory and, you know, just cleaning out of some stuff, and, uh, we, uh, we do have some concerns, um, we, we do have some things going on at the jail as far as maintenance and stuff, so we're gonna work on a comprehensive list uh, of what needs to be done. Uh, also, uh, we are missing some things with the, uh, with the department in reference to, uh, uh, personnel issues such as personnel records and stuff, so, uh, our training records are gone, and, uh, that's, that's gonna set us back on, on expense, so I wa- I wanted you guys to be prepared to know that, uh, you may see a lot of training coming in, in the near future, that's because we, we have to, if, uh, we're trying to locate all of our, uh, our certifications, uh, as most of you guys know, uh, if you carry a taser, you have to be certified in it, and you have to be actually tased in it, we have none of those records on file anymore. So the men on, unless we can provide those records, we'll have to, to re, to retrain on that, a- and some other things too, so just want you guys to know that we're, we're working hard to get everything where it's supposed to be, and just be patient with us, uh, there's a lot to do, so.
Does Apost or the state not?
Some does, uh, when I, when I went through the academy, Apost did not, uh, hang on to a taser certification, cause there was no such thing as a taser. Now, some of these younger guys, they should have that, uh, but, you know, you're looking, also looking at radar qualifications and taser and, uh, pepper spray, and there's, there's a lot of qualifications that were done on a local level, that, uh, they're no longer. taser and, uh, pepper spray, and there's, there's a lot of qualifications that were done on a local level, that, uh, they're no longer there, so. We're gonna put all that together, and you know, we're just having to start fresh, uh, and 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 that's okay, we'll get it knocked out and everything, we'll do it as, uh, as cost-effective as we can.
Well, I know, I know your, uh, officers probably have maintained their records on certifications.
Some of them have, some of them haven't, if they have maintained their records, good for them, that means they don't have to get tased again.
That's right.
So, I know, uh, when I started out many years ago, I've got about three big old binders full of my training and everything that I've kept up with over the years, and I hope they had the foresight to do that as well, but, uh, but other than that, you know, we, uh, we've done some, uh, moving around as far as offices and some painting and everything to get things ready, and, uh, we're just, uh, Mrs. Kennedy out here's been really a big help, and, uh, we appreciate that.
Good. Any questions for the sheriff? Comments?
No.
Thank you. Alright, boy. Any other, uh, Chuck, anything?
Okay.
We'll move on then, uh, consent agenda, it's approved minutes for the January eighth meeting, uh, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second, uh, by Kenneth.
Kyle.
Anybody else have corrections or anything? If not, all in favor say aye. Oppose, same say, motion, minutes are approved. We have nothing under old business to bring forward for now, so we'll move on to new business, uh, we've been asked to consider board appointments, that Southeast Alabama Rural Planning Organization Policy Committee, uh, and then the nine-one-one board, let's act on the policy committee first. Do we have anything in the book on that?
We do, page four.
So, presently serving is, uh, Bill Godwin, whose term expires, expires this month, it's, uh, just that one, one slot that's open, and it's a two-year term. And, uh, another's in conversation, I think, uh, the administrators had a conversation with commissioners, and I think Commissioner Adams is willing to serve there, uh, in that role, uh, you may have something else you wanna do, or we would certainly entertain a motion to appoint Kyle to fill that slot.
I'll make a motion with Kyle Adams.
I heard a motion and a second, all at one time, uh, anybody else have anybody, your thoughts on that? If not, all in favor of Kyle, being appointed there, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same say, alright, thank you, Kyle. And next is, uh, the nine-one-one board, they're seven members, they serve four-year terms. Uh, Sheriff, uh, is, i- has, has historically served in that slot, and, uh, Dennis Meeks, of course, was serving, and Blake has slipped out, but I think he's certainly willing to serve, Dennis is willing to step aside as, as is appropriate, and so, uh, is there a motion to appoint Blake Turman to the nine-one-one board to represent us?
I'll make a motion.
I'll say.
Motion and second, anybody else have any thoughts on that or comments? Violently important because nine-one-one does our dispatch, and I think it's appropriate that that slot be filled by the sheriff for his designated need, so, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same say, alright, Sheriff Turman will be our nine-one-one board rep. Uh, we had, the next item is consider alternate disposal method for previously declared surplus properties, and I'll ask the administrator to tell us what's involved in that.
Okay, we had, um, some property that the EMA, uh, director had requested to be surplused, and it was to be sold on gov deals. In looking at it, I believe it saw a lot of metal pieces, and it was determined that it may be of better use for welding material and used to scrap around the countywide yard if Lynn is so willing to accept it in that capacity.
So, we had, we had identified it to be s- uh, auctioned off on gov deal.
Not worth it, huh? Okay, so that's changed, you don't wanna do that, so just sell it as scrap at the scrapyard, okay.
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 Alright, so no change?
No, we need to just clear instead of selling on gov deals.
Instead of gov deals, it's scrap metal.
The scrap metal.
So, is there a motion to, uh, dispose of these items?
As scrap.
As scrap.
I'll so moved, thank you.
Alright.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same say, alright, go. And next is, uh, we need to consider, uh, awarding bids on the herbicide truck and steel pilings, Lynn, we'll let you tell us what, what we have there.
Uh, both these awards, we only had one, one bidder for each item, uh, for the herbicide truck, that was Roadside Inc. I'm out of Auburn, Alabama, and I request that we accept that bid.
Let's, let's look at, look at, is it, is there a page in here, oh, we're looking at.
There's just a, I've got the whole submitter here, but, uh, the.
Now, tell us, tell us what price is, the description of the truck.
It's three thousand dollars for a used, um, herbicide truck with a new, um, head, it has J- GPS capability, uh, showing actually where we sprayed, it keeps it with actual.
Already on it?
Already on, well, it'll be wired with the truck, yes.
It, is, what kind of chassis is it?
Uh, it's just a little small tandem, uh, Mitsubishi-type truck, is what it is.
Not those, uh, Mercedes.
Yes, it's some little small, one of those little smaller trucks.
We discussed this at a couple of times ago, and, you know, certainly, it certainly needed.
It's, uh, the, the single bid that was submitted is, is, is an appropriate price.
Yes, yes, it is.
And you say it's already outfitted for spraying, it has a spray rig installed?
Yes, yes. We specked it out to be, to be already ready to roll, so.
You know what model that truck is?
I agree, it's a two thousand eight, I believe, two thousand eight, I don't come into that.
That's fine, I just.
We put a, a bid spec of, I think it'd be that or older, sorry.
Well, the, uh, let's act on that one first, if you don't mind, uh, is there a motion to award that bid and, and purchase that truck as a request?
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
Second.
There's a second, uh, anybody have any questions beyond, I'm sorry, I'll ask questions prematurely, I guess, but anybody else have questions, comments, thoughts on that? It's covered in our budget, our plan for.
And just to, for clarification, we've budgeted money for a, we have a truck that was donated by the Sheriff's Department years, a couple of years ago, two of them actually. And we converted one to our new herb- the tr- herbicide truck that we have now, um, in the sliding, I think we budgeted like forty thousand dollars for that. Um, we also budgeted a new sign truck, but with our, our yard, we ha- we have, we had a smaller truck that we used to spray our dirt roads, it was a makeshift-type spray rig, and we basically converted that truck to our new sign truck, so net, we're, we're saving about forty-five thousand dollars in our budget by purchasing this, this one vehicle, so we're killing, we're getting a lot, a lot, a lot of savings by, by going with this truck, so.
Alright, if there's nothing else, would you have a motion and a second to award that bid, purchase the truck, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same say, alright, and then we have, uh, bids on steel pilings, it's on page five and six, uh.
Again, this is for our Mitchell Bridge, cause the price of steel, um, goes up daily, and, uh, it's hard to get a, a bid, um, for any length of time, but it's, uh, the only bid we have is from Skyline Steel, and those numbers seem to be, um, in order.
Okay.
By the current steel rate.
If you only get one bid, you can reject bids and negotiate, but if the pricing is correct, then we would move forward with it, is there a motion to award the bid to Skyline Steel?
I make the motion.
I'll say. Question, Lynn, on the, uh, on the calculation, there's an estimated use, or is that on a, you, you estimated each item in here, and the total of the bid was forty thousand seven oh seven fifty?
Four thousand dollars, yes.
Um. Is that, is that a typical purchase that you would expect from them?
Yes, yes.
On a, on a bridge project?
Cause you're looking at pile length, it would be fifty-foot sticks a pile, and it can be, you know, up to seventy-five feet in length, and you have basically five per what I consider a button or bent, so it's, it can add up pretty quick.
Okay, yes. Uh, the, the total bid, uh, just for sake of conversation, is forty thousand seven oh seven fifty. Um, there is a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same say, alright, we'll award that bid to Skyline Steel LLC, out of Birmingham, Alabama. Alright, uh, next is to consider an agreement for Geotech Services, uh, that's, uh, quite a long agreement here, looks like it covers about twenty pages. Uh, do you wanna just tell us in a brief overview of what we're looking at?
This, this is for three of our, this is for two of our flat bridges, which I've, I've, I've discussed earlier, with Ms. Donna up there, um, two of them are on Sanders Road, uh, two of the, uh, federal land access program bridges that we have for Geotech Services, and it's required by federal law, we have to do this, so it's not like it, we're just soliciting bids for, just for our re- it's, it's required, um, and also the other ones for our Canterbury Fifty-Nine Pointe Bridge, I've discussed also, that's, uh, for, uh, that's in, in the books to be, uh, constructed.
Alright, this is, uh, professional services, so it, it, it doesn't actually go through a bid program, uh, bid process, you, you ask for a proposal, and we, we, over the years, Thompson has done a lot related to bridge work across the state of Alabama, it's, uh, and how do you, how do you get comfortable on the pricing, or is there a quote per, for units?
It's a quote per, it's about a total about, and I, it's, it's quick, it's about forty-one thousand, maybe a little bit plus or minus, that amount for all three structures.
Okay. And you have, uh, kind of benchmarks that you look at and compare on projects, and that's an appropriate amount?
Yes. Yes.
So, is there a motion to, uh, enter this agreement with you, uh, for geotechnical service, services with Thompson Engineering?
I make a motion.
Lynn, just, uh, one other question, Thompson is out of, uh, Mobile?
Mobile. And they will do a scour analysis, which tells us how the, you know, the possibility of, of, of the material undermining.
Well, there are a number, a number of engineering firms here, uh, and, and they don't typically don't do the.
CDG, we checked with CDG in the past, um, but, uh, M volk, different ones.
This is really more of a specialized, bridge-related stuff, and that's what Thompson does, alright, there is a motion and a second, any other questions, comments? All in favor say aye.
Aha.
Oppose, same say, alright. And then, uh, next on the agenda, and I think we'll ask Ms. Karen to help us with this, is consider approval for additional part-time position for Sheriff's Department, uh, to be funded from law enforcement funds.
Uh, you have all previously agreed in the past, um, sheriff's term to allow them to hire three part-time employees to be paid out of law enforcement fund. With our new sheriff Turman coming in, then he has also, um, had some other individuals come into work for him that's gonna be working on that part-time basis, he's gonna pay out of law enforcement funds, so in order to keep the deputies, he would like to add that one more spot, um, that he can pay out of law enforcement funds to keep this current part-time workers, as well as the new hires.
We've had a conversation with him about other commitments of, of law enforcement funds, whether it's for vehicles or otherwise, and so he's aware of that, and working, kinda working with those thoughts in mind, trying to stretch his money, kinda like we're doing with the road, road bridge money, trying to make it, uh, get the job done, so. What about the, uh, workforce classifications, is that, is that something we can maybe lump into this and?
You can if you choose to, uh, just in the, uh, need for re-staffing his department, it was just some different changes that need to be made, and in the Sheriff's Department, the, uh, section zero five zero three zero six changed to Chief of Investigations, and then, um, the jail changing, um, position six two seven from a CO three to a SD two patrol deputy cer- certified.
Okay, uh, I know he's, he's had conversations with you, you commissioners, uh, called on, uh, one, one-on-one basis, uh, some of you at least, and so, maybe you have thoughts on this, let's, let's act on both of these together, if it's alright.
And another, another item, um, he is changing, the way our workforce classification chart works, we have the position, the code as far as the pay plan, and then there's also a title that he, that's associated with it, some of those, he's actually changing that position title, so I need to know if y'all want to bring these up at each time, it changes, how do y'all want to handle that? Just allow him to make those changes as needed, as long as it's not changing pay classification, or?
I certainly prefer to let him manage his office like he, like he's supposed to, unless y'all have different thoughts.
Yeah, as long as it doesn't affect the, the dollar value, I think, just the titles, well, irrelevant to me.
Alright, so a motion to, uh, approve the part-time position to be funded from law, law enforcement funds, and to amend the workforce classifications, and to allow for changes in job titles and descriptions as appropriate, a motion to approve those, is in order, are there's a motion, Kyle, is there a second?
I make a motion.
Second.
Second, alright, Joe, any other questions, comments? All in favor, say aye.
Yeah.
Oppose, same say. Alright, reports from staff, anybody, Rachel, you have any, okay? Commissioners, you have some things? We're at that point, we, uh, let me bring up one thing that we kinda have under, underway, and, uh, I didn't get a chance to talk to Joe before we got in. Uh, I, I think all of us are aware that there will be some changes at Covington Central Arena in the coming months, it's currently under contract, and we've been notified, at least verbally, that, that, that contract will end and not be renewed, and so the commission's gonna have to get back into that, it's June thirtieth, I think, is the, the, uh, date that the current contract ends, so there's some preliminary work, I think, that needs to be underway, and, uh, Commissioner Barton had agreed to take the lead on that and begin to do some work on determining what our options are, and, uh, and I, I know he's made progress on that, I've heard some of the conversation, but I'd like for us to kinda formalize that, Joe, if we could, if you would lead a committee. Uh, we had to be careful, I'd love to see a couple of commissioners, I'd love to serve on that particular one, just because I have a history, uh, with the arena from years ago, but, uh, certainly we could do something different, uh, but we, I'd like to see us f- formalize that with the appointment of another commissioner, and then maybe let the other three commissioners bring, uh, a committee member, a, put forth a committee member after you do some thoughts, and, and that way we have basically a committee of five folks that, that can lead this charge, if that's not inappropriate. Love to hear your thoughts on that, and I'd love for the administrator and the attorney to be, uh, ex-official members and be at the meetings and participate because of the nature of, of moving forward, so it's a major, it's a major undertaking for the county, in the commission, it's gonna take some expenses upfront, and it's, uh, it's, uh, it's a pretty heavy load, but the positive impact, I think, is immeasurable if it's handled correctly, and I'd love to see us move forward. I think the economic impact is, is, is more than we can imagine, if it's done that way, there's, there's a different focus for a person who is paying a certain amount and has costs at a certain level and wants to cover those costs with every event, versus someone whose primary focus is economic impact, uh, whether it's direct or indirect. So, just love to at least get the conversation started, I'm open to thoughts on that, if you wanna present them now, or we can come back to the next meeting and have that on the agenda.
Well, I've talked to some people throughout the community and, and about it, and even, and for us trying to get some funding for some additional improvements to it, uh, one of the things that, uh, I'd like to see is, uh, you know, possibility of improving the, uh, the, uh, air conditioning and heating, cause that's one of the biggest complaints that people have about it, and certainly the use of it, and make it cost-effective, um, that being said, we have discussed part of it with, uh, Mr. Shelby's office about, uh, and I talked with Ms. Harris about this, is it possibly being some type of a use for shelter during, uh, evacuation process from the people in Florida, if it meets for just animals and all that, and we have, uh, discussed, uh, talking with the Department of Agriculture about getting some help financially from that, um, and just kind of a broad range of people for other events, a lot of people in the community and organizations have made contributions to the arena for it to be used, you know, and, uh, uh, I think there's some diverse, uh, activities that could go on in there that would, uh, certainly draw more people in a kind of a different venue. Uh, that being said, we haven't moved forward trying to make a selection of any, anybody, uh, unfortunately, most everybody's gonna have everything booked for twenty nineteen, so it's probably gonna be the latter part of the year, uh, before we can start picking up a lot of events, because everybody's already got their schedule out.
But there's several of it's that are gonna come back, they've been on the schedule and historically, such as the high school rodeo, junior high, those things.
But, you know. Yeah, those two are coming, and I think they have one scheduled, um, March here, and I don't think it's gonna be at this facility, the finals are in June, and, uh, we're proud to have those, that's, uh, something that we worked on, Mr. White, back years ago, before I became a commissioner, is to get the high school rodeo finals brought here, because they were in Montgomery, and, uh, we have a good, safe area for these kids to come and, and stay, and, uh, and go around town and, and enjoy what we have to offer here, and that's been a, been a real good thing. Uh, I can't think of anything, uh, something else I think was coming up, can't remember what that.
There's a Bama Challenge coming up with the high school rodeo.
Right, that's, uh, Alabama, Georgia shootout, they used to call it, it's a, uh, uh, Georgia High School Rodeo Association and Alabama High School Rodeo Association have a two-day, a three-day event where they come in and, and compete against each other, as well as the, their, um, within the organization themselves, and have some awards, and it, it's, uh, it'll bring probably forty pa- families coming in, at least forty from a high school. Of course, you know, that brings mama, daddy, and grandmama, granddaddy, and everybody else, and it's a real good organization, and I'd encourage people to go see it, just to see a bunch of young people.
That, those events, that and the finals rodeo that are up already on the schedule are with the current contractor, the current.
Right.
Uh, so, we'll, we'll support that any way we can, but then look forward to building on that, so. Y'all, uh, any comments on that, that, that idea?
So, at the next meeting.
So at the next meeting, what you're saying is, um, the commissioners will, um, suggest appointments to that.
If we can, if you can come with one, if you haven't decided on somebody, but if that's, if y'all are comfortable with that approach, uh, and certainly we can discuss it beyond this, but I just wanted to get it on the table for consideration, so.
I think, you know, we kind of talked about that a little bit, about getting other people of venues and things that they come in with their ideas, not just your locals, but have someone outside that can look into it from an outside view and it would help bring more effective of what they do and how they do things that would help us do what we need to do.
The immediate, I mean, the immediate need is to look at, uh, what what kind of renovations and upgrades need to be made now to 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 hit the ground running and then look at how to manage it, what be the best approach to management and, uh.
Well, that we have only one that I'm aware of in the state or surrounding state that would be open and and running. Everyone that's ever been built, unfortunately, are no longer working because they let political favors and egos and everything get in the way and it's closed, one in Lewisville, Alabama, I'm sitting there, bacon, been there for five years.
So there's a lot of interest, uh, uh, amongst users as to what we do with this, yeah, so we need to.
And the market's improving in there, we need to.
I think we have a great opportunity out of us.
Right.
Any other comments, thoughts?
Yes, sir.
Let me ask you something on the, uh, the real deal part.
Yes, sir.
Uh, the county needs to advertise, I got friends in Butler County, Millstone County and all, they don't ever know it and I don't know this yet.
Yes. Yes, um, duh.
You have a whole lot of, there's participation.
If you're talking about the high school parts, sir?
I'm talking about the high school.
Or any event, really.
Right, I I agree a hundred percent, unfortunately, the only ones.
Even even Alabama, uh, nationals, it wasn't advertised around here.
No, sir, it's not and they the.
Cause the local people didn't know it.
Right, the High School Rodeo Association handles all of the advertising, all, they're the ones that do it. Uh, I think with some input from us and some help, uh, I know the local radio station here is, you know, has interviewed some of them, but it only covers this area. Um, that's a good idea and maybe that some of them may go to Butler County and these other counties and get on the.
They got into victim, they got a bunch of, uh, they'll be the guys.
They may get somebody on the radio or newspaper in those areas to help, you know, promote this one, that'd be a good thing, thank you.
The mar- the marketing is is part of what this committee needs to be working towards over the next five or six months. Anyone else? A motion to adjourn would certainly be in order, thank you, Kenneth.
I'll say.